So thank you for being here. Uh before we start, I just want to let people know that we probably saw the sign on the door. So we don't have microphones anymore, but the room is fully microphone even in the audience. So um if if you, you know, there's only a couple of people here tonight, but just for people at home, if you um say anything in the audience you're gonna whisper, it will get me a little bit bad. So we just want to let everybody know that in advance, so there's no hot mic moments for anyone. Um and also, uh just to uh to introduce the board members to ensure that we're in a quorum.
Mark Lee.
I'm Dottie Frismanetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And we have Town Administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Michael Blanchard, and Executive Assistant Elizabeth Heck. Um I want to also say that this meeting is being broadcast and recorded on local cable, Easton's ECAT. Um and thank them for being here today and broadcasting us on Facebook Live as well. So the first item that we have is a vehicle for hire application. Uh this is for Mark Rob Arnows from Virginia Says Mark Lorin LLC, five Rattle Hill Court, number forty-three in Easton. So we have an application in our packet for a vehicle for hire. Uh this application has been reviewed by the Police and Treasure Collector. There's no concerns. Um doesn't, has anybody had a chance to take a look at the application and does anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
So this is for a taxi cab, would be looking down.
Uh, let me see.
Limiting.
Yeah, let me see. Let me see.
All right, terrific. Um if there's no uh questions or comments, if somebody would like to make a motion to approve this license?
So moved, Barger.
Second land.
Father and lamb all in favor? Unanimous, excellent. Item two, road closing request. The Children's Museum of Easton is having their twenty-seventh Father's Day Road Race and family fun walk on Sunday, June eighteenth. We do have a request from the Children's Museum for safety reasons. Uh they are asking permission to close down a portion of Sullivan Avenue, beginning at the southernmost edge of the museum's property, adjacent to the edge of the museum's garage driveway, and continuing northward to the terminus of Sullivan Avenue as it intersects with the Canuck Street from eight AM to eleven AM. Um the representatives from the museum will place bread-orange traffic cones and post signage to delineate event space. Staff will be wearing bright orange safety vests, and they plan to secure two police details on the day of the event. There will also be the presence of EMTs and appropriate equipment. This request has been circulated to Public Safety and the Department of Public Works. And um uh when we take a look at this, we could approve it contingent upon coordination with the Police and Fire Departments. And the applicant must apply for any necessary temporary sign permits through the Inspection Services Department. So they do this every year, obviously, for, what did I say, twenty-seven years that they've been doing this?
Great.
Uh it's great. They run right by my house down Elm Street, and I get to see a lot, lots of ages, lots of parents with strollers and little kids on their shoulders, so it's a real fun day. Any comments, questions?
It's great to meet you.
Yep. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve this road closing request?
So moved, Barger.
Second land.
Father and lamb all in favor? Unanimous. All right, the third one, one-day day liquor licenses. We have a few of these. So the first one is for Jake Fitzgerald for private wedding, Rebarrow Street, June tenth, four-thirty to ten-thirty. This is for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a private wedding at Oakesham's Memorial Hall. A police detail is not required for this event.
Could use the help.
Make a motion?
So moved, Barger.
Second land.
Father and lamb all in favor? Unanimous. Next, we have Langwater Farm, two fifteen Washington Street. They have several events coming up. So one is the Spring Food Festival, April first, ten AM to four PM. The next one is the Strawberry Festival, June seventeenth, ten AM to four PM, with a rain date, October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And then farm pizza nights. They, we had voted on a slate of these dates uh at our last meeting, but they requested a date change from June sixteenth to June twenty-third. Um and Kevin has um applied for two one-day beer and wine licenses for their Spring Food Festival and their Strawberry Festival. And their um, I'm sorry. Uh these police details are not required for these events. So are you here for that one?
Yeah.
Do you wanna come up?
Sure.
And just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the event.
Sure, so I need to kick in the fire. Hi, everybody. Uh so my husband Kevin and I own Langwater Farm. Um and we have just come up with some good community events for the spring. Um so the first one, our Spring Food Festival, is when we were celebrating a reopening uh like of our farm store. So back to normal business hours for the season. Uh so we're gonna showcase all of the other local food producers that we're working with. Um it'll be like lots of people there, um local jam and cheesemakers and everyone giving out samples. And um the original Easton Farmers Market will be there that day as well. We're making wood-fired pizza. And um that shuttle town would be a good addition. Um and then the Strawberry Festival, I'm sorry. Um the Strawberry Festival will be um during the height of strawberry picking season. The weather was a little bit wonky this winter. Um the strawberries seem to have come doing really well. So we're gonna um do pay rides and have lots of strawberry foods and things like that, so.
Okay. And I have to say, I've had your pizza out of the pizza oven at different events. It's the best pizza.
Oh, thank you, yeah. I hope you enjoy it.
Should we show you the one who applied for more nights?
Well, we do have a pizza night monthly through the summer, so.
Excellent, that's great.
Yeah.
It's really great, and congratulations on on the new store. That building is gorgeous.
Ah, thanks.
And uh just the inside of it is immaculate. And really, the whole area, I mean, you know, I have pictures of it from several years back on what it started like. And just to watch it grow and uh it really, it's like a Norman Rockwell painting. When you drive by and see the families out there and everybody participating and just having fun days. So we're so lucky to have that in Easton.
Ah, thanks, yeah, we're really loving it. It's just been able to really expand everything we can offer the community to, like just more events and community gatherings and um so many other local food producers. Like we've just been fine, you know, like bit by bit, like so many. Be able to offer that to everybody and expand their business as well, so.
Great. Well, I would say people follow you on social media, Facebook and Instagram. You on Twitter also?
Uh, no, not really.
I think so. Uh Facebook and Instagram, you always have a list during the week of what's gonna be there on the weekends and all the fun things to do. So definitely follow Langwater and um keep that in mind for your weekend plans.
Okay, thank you.
So um would you like to make a motion, Craig?
So moved, Barger.
Second land.
So let me just to clarify, uh that these licenses are gonna be approved out of the slate. So uh uh what we had just.
So April first.
And tomorrow.
June seventeenth, and then a change from June sixteenth to June twenty-third.
Yeah. Uh so Barger made the motion, we have second, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Good to see you.
Thank you guys, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So next, we have um, let's see. Stonehill College has applied for three. Hang on, do I have this out of the way here?
No.
Stonehill College has applied for three and a change on one. So there's a Woman's Ice Hockey Banquet, April first, three to six. Graphic Design Alumni Dinner, April twenty-first, six to ten. Senior Student Athlete Athlete Reception, May first, from five to nine. And Women's Basketball Banquet. They're gonna be requesting a date change. They had originally, we had voted on uh March twenty-fourth and it got moved to April fourteenth. So they've um, so those licenses um uh police details are not required for those events. So um would anybody like to make a motion?
So moved, Barger.
Second land.
Father and lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. So next, we have the Contractor Board, Southeastern Regional Services Group, Serviceage for roadway salt, drainage, and related services for the Department of Public Works. Um Mari Paving and Reclamation, LaRusso Corp., PJ Heating, Offstate Asphalt, Indus Incorporated, Premier Fence, Martinez Martinez Road Construction, LAL Construction and Roadway Maintenance Services. Connor, do you wanna give us a little background on this?
Uh sure. So as the board will recall, we are a member of Serviceage, which is a group purchasing consortium in southeastern Massachusetts that does basically bulk procurement for both services and supplies typically related to public work so that we could buy in large quantities and get an economy of scale doing so. Uh this is a uh group contract for a variety of public work services, including sidewalk drainage and other road type repairs. I believe this is just to vote to award the contracts. And then from a process perspective, we will notify Serviceage and then they send back signature pages for Dottie to execute for all the individual contracts based on a rate sheet here.
Nope. Is this chapter ninety-one or is this?
Uh this is carried within the DPW operating budget, so they may leverage chapter ninety for some of these as needed, but I don't have um particular, it's not done, I, to my knowledge, on a vendor-by-vendor level.
And the top, the service is on this contract on March first, twenty-twenty-three to February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four. All right.
So moved, Barger.
Second hand.
Father and lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. Um item five, discussion and vote, Stonehill College Gift Funds for Engineering and Other Professional Services Associated with Disposal of Surplus Property, uh three eighty-eight Depot Street, otherwise known as the Center School.
Thanks, Dottie. So it's attached to the board's packet, but I think for public benefit, anyone watching this now or later, I'm just gonna touch on some of the major points in the memo that I've submitted to the board requesting use of these gift funds. Um so just taking a step back, a few months back in November twenty-two, a town meeting voted to offer as a town through our office to dispose of Center School as surplus property. Now the Blanche A. Ames School has been occupied. Uh that request by administration to town meeting was amended on the floor. Uh and that amendment from the voters included a requirement that prior to the sale, uh rather than the town preserving, yardly would rink through a deed restriction that it actually be fully carved off as a separate parcel. So in order to effectuate that vote, we have to take certain engineering and permitting steps prior to any procurement process to dispose of and potentially sell the Center School. Specifically, and we've spent some work on this with planning and DPW engineers at this point, to bring in this plan in order to subdivide the existing thirteen acre parcel into two new uh pieces of property, one with approximately twelve acres of land and a former school on it, and then the other to be approximately fifty thousand square feet with the rink. Uh we have to go through a survey of the full parcel, wetland delineation, and seek an A and R from the Planning and Zoning Board. Only after those processes have been done and complete can we then bring an appraiser in to assess the value of the newly created Center School parcel, which will not have a rink on it, uh which we need to inform the request for proposals that we'd issued from this office. Uh so prior to those amendments happening on the floor, we had not planned to subdivide this parcel. Our approach that we had talked about quite a bit publicly in the fall was to approach preservation of a ring through a deed restriction or some other requirement that we could do through the sale process. So we had not planned to subdivide the parcel, so we didn't have an appropriation set aside to do this work. Um so what we've done is line up, I think, a pretty uh reasonable approach to get this done and keep this moving now, which is to leverage uh currently unappropriated Stonehill Gift Funds that the board is the caretaker of, the amount of thirty-two thousand. Uh Stonehill uh gifts are broken up each year. The board sets aside a sum of that money for future use. Right now, you have ninety-one thousand in that account, so this uh fits, I think, well within uh the ability. Uh and it certainly is a unique and unanticipated expense. Uh so if we proceed now, uh surveying would commence immediately. We would target uh planning board A and R permitting for May approximately. So I've included a kind of table of uh time estimates from the engineering firm. Uh I have a contract in front of the board with tonight. So that would take us till about late May to get before the planning board. Following that permitting, we would do an appraisal and do that concurrent for preparation of a request for proposals for the disposal of the new parcel, which would come back to the board for review and approval prior to it being published and in accordance with Inspector General Guidelines. Um this will put us into the summer, late summer, for select board review and approval of any potential bid on the property. So uh we felt it was a good approach, once we identified these items, to bring it to you now and keep this moving. That's uh what I have here, Connor. I haven't answered any questions yet.
I had several questions and you answered them throughout that entire.
Yeah, documentation is good.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad that we have that account. It's not a lot of money in there, but this is one of the things, if you have a select board versus a council, that anything has to go back to town meeting. I'm not sure how many people at home know that. And if that happened, this could have been a real missed opportunity. We couldn't find a way to appropriate. There's not a lot of areas we have where we can appropriate money from out of the budget without going to town meetings. So um this, this is a good use of those funds. Um I've also been getting a lot of questions from people asking, you know, how are we moving along on this? When is it gonna, you know, when is it going out with bid? And this is quite a delay from where we thought we were gonna be with this. So I just want people to realize that that change at town meeting set into reaction some other things, so delays and costing increases, so.
Yeah, I think Connor, you were pretty clear, it's town meeting was gonna push things back as a result.
Yeah.
I, I think that's the case, yes. But uh in any event, I mean, we feel this allows us to, you know, get, get back on track, keep it moving. Uh you know, thankfully, we do have a lot of good data on the site already from the MSBA process, so that's good, uh that reduced the scope of this to what we have in front of you. Uh but we were able to move, uh we do have small consulting budgets, as the board knows. So we've been able to move with appraisals and other due diligence on our hall much more expeditiously than we have been here. Uh but if the board approves this request, we can keep moving and we'll keep making progress.
If somebody would like to make a motion to approve the request to use um thirty-two thousand dollars from the Stonehill College Gift Fund for Engineering and Other Professional Services associated with the disposal of surplus property at three eighty-eight Depot Street.
So moved, Barger, read you some money.
Second land.
Father and lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Item six, discussion and vote, Contract TA dash twenty-twenty-three dash oh-two, Granite City Partners for Engineering and Other Professional Services for the Disposal of Surplus Property, also at three eighty-eight Depot Street, uh the Center School.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So attached to your packet, um it's the contract associated with these services. I, it is for the engineering. Uh we just talked through survey, wetland delineation, uh permitting, as well as uh technical and advisory support services through the creation of the RFP, issuance of the RFP, and closing of that process, which will be uh quite valuable, I believe. So the contract is our standard Architects and Engineers Form. Uh it's been reviewed by council. Uh funding is now available, based on another item. And uh the owner of Granite City Partners, Joe Shea, is here. If there are any questions or like any perspective from Joe that I have not covered.
Joe, do you wanna come up and uh? I know that you and Mark had spoken a little bit before then. Uh I just wanted to make sure. Craig, do you know Joe?
Yeah, well, Joe, you used to be here quite often.
I have been here quite often. It's a, it's really a personal thrill to be back, so thank you very much.
We're great to have you. It's great to have you back. So tell us a little bit about your company.
Uh thank you for, especially for those at home. I'm Joe Shea. I'm the managing member of Granite City Partners, an engineering firm located in the city of Quincy. And for anybody who recognizes me, I worked with the city of Quincy for ten years. I was one of the former owners with Woodard and Carr. Excellent civil engineering firm. Um that's done quite a bit of work in Easton and continues to do work.
Well, it's great. And uh one of the benefits of working together is that we have a lot of history of understanding of the town and, you know, a lot of these spaces. So that really is helpful, uh working with, with the contractor or any, any professional services groups.
I, I appreciate that, yes. We uh had the great fortune of, of being involved with the town through the Envision Easton Initiatives and Creations. So as we were in discussions with Connor about the Center School, my brain defaults to, okay, does this fall into which Envision Easton category? It is additional recreational fields, uh as one of the, I think, one of the EV goals. Uh really very exciting to be back. And I'm back with a slightly different uh bent. Before I was a, uh for years, I led a sewer group or sewer division, so we worked heavily on sewer-ing Easton. Um since I have, uh since left to start a much smaller firm. We have seven people at Granite City Partners. Uh we've become real estate advisors as well as engineers. A little more boutiquey than your traditional engineering consultant, uh but it has really allowed us to focus very much on Massachusetts municipalities with some very unique features, such as disposition of land. Um in this case, when the disposition of the Center School comes up, we formally just heard the word big, but we're gonna recommend that it become a best value proposal, such that the disposition is a, based upon qualifications, so that the answer isn't just a dollar sign, it's what's in harmony with the neighbor.
That's a really good point, and especially where we know that there is a housing crisis right now. And, you know, we're also trying to develop a lot of space out in this region, particularly for life sciences and for other economic development initiatives. So uh to have somebody with that expertise about asset disposition for, for municipal properties, that's a real specialty that's, I think, your vision to get into that field now is really smart because there's, that's gonna, there's gonna be a big need for that.
Thank you. I can share. We've been very busy since we started.
Yes, I'm sure.
Been wonderful. But Connor covered the scope and the timeline. Really, for us, the critical path recommendation is getting the survey done. Uh with your approval tonight, the team will be ready to begin wetland flagging starting on the twentieth and survey on the twenty-seventh of the week of the twentieth, the week of the twenty-seventh. But once that information is in-house, we can do the, the planning board documents together while we're also trying to prepare the package for the appraisals, while we're also trying to prepare the package for disposition. That will allow us to, to meet some timelines, but we completely agree with the timeline that Connor has laid out. We'll be back in the summer, hopefully, with a best value proposal from a number of entities.
All right, terrific. That's great. Well, if there's no other questions, uh Craig, would you like to make a motion to uh award this contract to New York Twenty-Twenty-Three Granite City Partners?
Uh in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars, so moved, Barger.
Second land.
Father and lamb, all in favor? Unanimous, excellent. Thank you, Mike, thanks for being here.
Thank you, John. Nice to see you again. Good talking with you.
You too.
Um next, we have the Town Administrator, Update for Municipal Facilities Replacement.
Thank you, Dottie. So given that we were going to have a couple of items tonight relating to kind of uh property planning, I felt it was a good time to provide a little bit more depth on the standing updates that I've been giving since at least last summer on our ongoing efforts to plan for replacement of police, fire, and public works. So again, for benefit of anyone watching at home or later, I'm just gonna touch on some of the highlights of the memo that I've included in your packet, which is also on our website, to provide a brief update on where we are. Uh so we have been working, uh you know, in, in one form or another at a conceptual level for many years of a project to replace police, fire, and public works in Easton, really in earnest, starting in twenty-fourteen with a comprehensive needs assessment done by Doran Whittier. That was also a, a critical predicate to who now successfully constructed Blanche A. Ames Elementary School. Uh that advanced on the municipal side in twenty-nineteen with a report from DPW Director Dave Field and Municipal Building Committee Concurring that we should uh get to work on feasibility and schematic design for replacing police, fire, and public works. That was, I think, the fall or winter of twenty-nineteen. We all know what happened shortly thereafter with the arrival of COVID. That put us on ice for a little bit. But we picked the ball back up by the fall of two thousand twenty-one. And town meeting appropriated about a half million for us to get to work on feasibility and schematic design work. To just recount why we're doing this, again, if you know, the board is well aware, but if anyone's tuning in for a first time. Our public works, DPW water, police, and fire facilities, particularly on Lowthorpe Street range from fifty to more than seventy years old, they are antiquated and not up to a variety of accessibility, safety, or environmental codes. They're too small for the equipment, a person on the house, resulting in overcrowding of that equipment and exposure of that equipment to the elements and confinement of personnel to facilities that are inadequate for them to continue working safely. Their past are useful lives, and it is no longer a wise use of limited annual capital dollars to continue spending on repairs for facilities that are just so antiquated. So we began feasibility and assembled a project team in two thousand and twenty-two. And last fall, we had a, a good push with about a dozen or so in public meetings and community outreach sessions where we were highlighting the different approaches that the Municipal Building Committee and the project team have laid out as potential solutions for a problem we're trying to fix. In October last fall, the Municipal Building Committee voted to accept what they call Option Five B uh as their preferred solution to move into schematic design. Uh that involves replacing all current police, fire, and public works facility, excepting Depot Street Station Two, uh which will no longer be a main fire station, but will stay in the fire EMS family and remain used. Uh replacing all of those other facilities, so we consolidated Public Safety Public Works Facility on municipal land we own at five twenty-four Depot Street with a new fire substation at the intersection of Washington and Main Street at Daley's Corner. The new facilities would be approximately a hundred forty thousand gross square footage with a conceptual construction cost estimating between a hundred and four and a hundred and twenty-two million. Those cost estimates are substantial, and so it's always important that we talk about them um to consider them in the context of potential cost of base repair uh and additions or replacements that would be necessary if we wanted to simply just uh fix what we have um and bring them up to modern code. Even doing that requires us to set aside that outside of the code challenges these buildings present, that triggers you would hit with ADA for accessibility. Many of them are on parcels of land, particularly public works on Center Street, that are nowhere near large enough. Uh you know, the land area at DPW on Center Street is basically the size of what the building needs to be. Uh but even if you set that aside, to repair and bring these facilities up to code would itself be in excess of one hundred million uh for less functional buildings that continue to be spread throughout the community and not ready for the next fifty years. So since that decision in October of twenty-two, we've been in the schematic design phase. It's been ongoing since November of twenty-two. Uh and we are getting close to some really critical milestones. Hence the kind of long update here, including cost estimating and locking in a project scope and budget. Um all the information I'm touching on here is online. It's at easton dot ma dot U S slash M B C. So where we are right now is that we have site and survey, we have site survey and wetland delineation work happening at five twenty-four Depot Street, which is the proposed site for the consolidated police, fire, and public works facility uh on the back of the site. We are doing the same site survey and wetland delineation at Daley's Corner on Stonehill's property with their agreement at Main and Washington, which is a proposed site for a fire substation, subject to ongoing negotiations of the lease of Stonehill. We are doing user group focused meetings, uh which I believe members of the board have been invited to some. We've had other Board and Committee Chairs in relevant jurisdictions invited as well. These are kind of nitty-gritty design meetings where folks from Castle Booze, Weston Ed Sampson, and the, the users, in this case, police, fire, public works employees, folks with expertise in, uh you know, electric and HVAC systems, come in and really start getting into the nuts and bolts of what kind of systems we need to have in these facilities, what kind of layouts we think would be useful from a workflow perspective. Uh and we are starting to get cost estimating to inform the Municipal Building Committee's upcoming project scope and budget decision. Uh so where we go from here, there's what, things are gonna start feeling like they're happening really fast, even though we've been working on this for a couple of years. Um in April or May, uh the exact date is to be determined. I think we're leaning towards May. Municipal Building Committee will be voting project scope and budget. That's a really critical milestone because that's when we really start shifting away from these broad conceptual numbers uh to really refine. We need exactly, you know, we think we need exactly this much square footing, square footage on these sites of land with this type of site work. And this is what markets telling us that costs and roughly what we think we're going to be. Uh we will give a detailed roadmap at that point in May to the Select Board. We'll come back once the budget has been finalized to a final scope and budget presentation along with a detailed roadmap for community engagement over the summer. We'll be bringing folks from PMA, uh from their communications team. One of the reasons we selected them as the project managers, they have folks in-house who can help with this, uh support those. The public may know, we don't actually have any staff dedicated to web content management or any kind of online outreach. Um and so we think it's gonna be really important for folks who wanna engage with this project to get brought up to speed, to be able to go places and find information in a readily accessible and digestible way. So when we lock that uh scope and budget in, come to the Select Board, give an update on the project scope, budget, and a communication plan along with the folks who are gonna help us with that. Going into June, uh we plan to have the tax impact analysis, which is usually really when people start getting uh focused and engaged. Um I should have led with this. To build this schedule, uh I basically went back to twenty-nineteen, which feels like six lifetimes ago in some regards, and looked at our exact meeting schedule as it pertain to the Blanche Ames Project. So that is what informed this. And if you can believe that, this is actually slightly less aggressive than that. Uh so we're targeting June for a tax impact analysis. We're working with Robbie on that, based on what the project scope and budget uh selected in May is, as well as having a community forum and uh facilities tours. So we did offer, we had some forums and went to some civic groups where we did get some good engagement. We actually had very little takers on the in-person tours of the existing facilities. So we did offer, we had some forums and went to some civic groups where we did get some good engagement, but we actually had very little takers on the in-person tours of the existing facilities. We'll try that again, again, I think, once we do a tax impact analysis and those numbers start floating out quite, people will be much more engaged. They wanna come see what, you know, what the hub of is and why we need to be replacing these, so hopefully we'll get more traction there. July, we'll have another round of community forums and community tours. And then, exact date to be determined, we will have a special town meeting in the second half of July, depending on board voting to call for it, to authorize the borrowing for the detailed design and construction costs for replacement of all police, fire, DPW facilities contingent on a successful debt exclusion election, which would happen in the first half of August. Again, exact date to be determined, but this is again the same kind of cadence that we took with the Blanch Change project. We did the project budget presentation and outreach plan in August, select board called, we did, the select board received a tax impact analysis, called for the election, called for the town meeting in September, then in October, you had town meeting, in the first week of November, you had the election. There's a couple of new dynamics now, we have vote by mail, so we have to kind of build that some time in for that. So I don't think, we will be ultimately recommending to the board they have town meeting in the election within a week, which is what we did last time. Maybe a couple of weeks, we'll we'll work through that, it's a new dynamic, but otherwise, that's that's the game plan. So if anyone has any particularly strong feelings about that, now is a good time to let us know, otherwise we will continue on that schedule and we'll start refining it and really drilling down and getting getting ready.
I sat in on one of the the design meetings and I was so impressed with the presentation by the architects, particularly impressed with the amount of work and effort and faultfulness from our staff.
Yes.
They were really, I don't know if you guys saw it, but it they were very impressive in terms of being able to answer the questions, being able to talk about security and it just was very impressive, I kudos to our our staff.
Yeah, the folks who have in public works, but also within fire, police, with specialties of fire prevention and inspections are remarkably have incredibly deep knowledge and a lot of them have the benefit of having, they already done quite a few big projects in the past decade. A lot of them worked on CEMRAC, they have a really good perspective on the IT systems and security protocols from a cyber perspective of DPW. And of course, everyone has worked a lot on some new school, so we have a lot of really, really, really valuable institutional knowledge kind of on, you know, on our roster right now, which is another good reason to do this while we have.
There are other towns locally who have gone through the same process, so that they really have that opportunity to check with other towns about how they did it. They show the designs, et cetera, if you're Rockton, Mansfield and other other places, it was impressive.
Right, and the lead designer for this project is Castle Booze was the designer for CEMRAC, so there's a lot of interconnectivity there, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I have no question, the caliber of the people, everybody involved and what they will create, if they have the opportunity to create it, will be remarkable. I'm very interested in the tax compact analysis and to hear from the public, as I mentioned a few times throughout. The public, I don't think they did really been engaged in, this is natural, they don't get engaged until they see what it's gonna do to their, of this initial tax bill. So I'm very interested in that, I'm dying to hear what that impact would be and how they feel about that. That's that's the next big thing for me.
Well, I think going back to the to the Dorian Whittier study that we've known for a long time, I remember the first time that I read that years ago, I was shocked at the huge price tag, even for some of the newer schools like the high school and middle school, some of the things to really like get them up to a hundred percent standard. And I still think of those as very new schools, but for the older buildings, I think that that was what convinced a lot of people, aside from some of the other things like the the actual deterioration of those schools putting more children in them. But also the cost to to just get them up to code, and not even having the amount of programming space that you need. So if we, at the very least, we owe to our staff to have their buildings be safe and up to code to work in, right? And we owe the people, you know, that have accessibility needs to be able to access these buildings.
Actually getting to buildings, which is not possible.
Whether they're the public or whether they work there.
Right.
So, you know, every every minute that we wait on this, the price tags are going up because of inflation and cost of materials and so forth. When we had the conversation last time about what our borrowing rate was, I was really surprised that because of our credit rating, we're still able to borrow a a lower amount of money, so.
About three, yes, three percent.
You know, I think that moving this quicker, there's some volatility as to what that looks like in a couple of years.
Right.
And, you know, I don't I don't want people to feel like it's being rushed because we've been essentially talking about this for years and it's well planned.
It's not too much. No, I definitely have been.
But like you said, that there's, you know, people are gonna, you know, wanna certainly know their tax impact and, you know, we'll we'll do it the way we always do, give the data, there's gonna be some things coming off the the long-term borrowing, some things moving around and we'll do everything that we can to look for other funding sources to try to keep everything, you know, minimize the impact. And then, you know, we also have, this is not a Q R L or a fix-all for everything, but some of the tax we've that we've put out for people that need it in the community. So we'll keep trying to ensure that we refund those and we encourage other people to volunteer, donate into some of those as well.
Right, and we're gonna, we'll have a substantial amount of work to do to go through, but kind of value proposition exercise of because there is no way around it, this is incredibly expensive, like this is a large project.
Right.
And it's about demonstrating through the the data that we have that in action costs more and doing it later costs more.
Also, we've got pretty good track record of the things that we have been involved with, they have come in, you know, on schedule. I'm not gonna say all the details in drink time, but, you know, they they have been very successful projects, so.
Right.
Another thing about this that I think is really interesting is, you know, I think a lot of people are talking about the environment and the carbon footprint and energy and these buildings are gonna be very energy efficient. When we do build these new buildings, that does help to contribute to saving some of the the carbon footprint that we have in the town. And looking at that, I know that they look at that with Blanche Elementary School, Blanch Ames Elementary School as well. So those those really do contribute to the overall energy goals that we have.
And the proposed site has access to sewer, which is great.
Right.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's really good.
Well, I think it's a great update and we we hope that people are watching this and send any questions.
We're coming engaged.
Send any questions, you wanna send it out, don't wait till, don't wait till the the week of.
Engaged, that's the question.
Yes. Yep.
Um, you know, when we get the input, we can really work that into what we're looking at as well.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we are already looking at reviewing annual town meeting draft for the warrant articles one, three, four and eight. Our town meeting is May fifteenth, mark your calendars, reserve a seat.
Sure, thank you, Donnie, so attached in your packet is a first draft of the annual town meeting warrant, not the same town meeting as this project that we just talked about. We'll have a summer town meeting for that like we have.
With other February line projects.
Uh, town meeting, fair Monday in May, May fifteenth. Uh, so you have a draft warrant in here and as is typical early in the process, we have only a handful of articles fully ready for review and inclusion at this point. Just to tick through them, article one is your acceptance of annual reports, that's standard. And I would ask for board take a vote to include and recommend.
Any comments, questions?
Please, Andrew.
Alright, I'll take a motion to include and recommend article one.
So move project, second, Liam.
Roger and Liam, all favor? You know. Alexis, article three, elected officials compensation.
Sure, thanks, Donnie, so state law requires that elective official compensation be set annually and this is the same level funding that this has been at for many, many years. Better, better like us.
At least doesn't rise in inflation.
Uh, no, it's not, sorry.
Okay, well, I just wanna say that these stipends, you know, it's it's very nice to have that, but a lot of people don't realize that this left board, this is not a full-time, well, it can be a full-time job, but it's essentially a volunteer job. Many of us have full-time jobs on top of this and we don't have an office at town hall. So people are emailing us or sending us information and we take a little bit to get back to them, it's because this is our our full-time priority job.
It it costs more to be in this position than that than that number right there, by law, like in time and and other things, so.
Exactly. Right, well, and and you know, I know that there was a discussion about this before, I'm not lobbying to increase the the price on this,
Yes.
but I I, when I am not on the board anymore, I probably will because I think that sometimes it it, you know, personally, it's it's not an issue for me, but if we're looking for diversity on upwards and cities and particularly people with younger families, they might need babysitting, you know, funding for babysitting, not having any kind of a stipend of value really precludes some people from being able to do this. So I think it's something that we should think about, you know, incidentally, not to go way off on a tangent, but if we have campaign accounts, you can use campaign account money to buy tickets to a gala or to do things like that, but you can't use campaign money for babysitting for your children so you can attend a meeting. So I think I would love to see that changed, I've tried to advocate for that with the Mass Municipal Association from time to time that comes up, so. So that's a long conversation about the elected compensation.
Yeah.
Would you like to make a motion to include and recommend, Craig?
Absolutely.
Second, Liam.
So that's Roger and Liam, all in favor? You know. Um, the next is article four, payment of bills from a prior fiscal year.
This is a housekeeping item, we typically, it's not common that we have bills from prior fiscal year, but in the event that any come up before May fifteenth, we always have this included in the warrant just in case. So I'd ask for board take a motion to include, there's no need to take a recommendations stance.
Move to include article four.
Second, Liam.
All in favor? You know. Alright, and article eight, the revaluation article.
Sure, Chief Assessor Robbie Alfred is here, he can get a little bit more detail on this, but basically it's required by state law to so many years of a town do a full revaluation of property in the community, of one which our tax bills are based and you do that whether you prefer to assist, we do interim updates each year for our staff, but this is a comprehensive project, Robbie. If you wouldn't mind just giving a kind of overview of the requirements and what these projects hope to achieve.
Good evening, so basically the money is for commercial industrial. We, the last, I wanna say five years, we had someone who worked for one of the revow companies that kind of went on their own, so we got a good rate, well, he's back with the revow company now, so going out, we're gonna see a significant increase for the commercial industrial revaluation. Personal property, we always go out for. Now with the five oh fours, which are the utilities, basically the gas companies, we have to do a mix of fifty-fifty valuation, so it's fifty net book and it's fifty based on appraisal. We have three in town, the price from the last revow was eight thousand dollars for each year, I'm expecting it to increase. I don't have total numbers yet because we really don't go out to bid until really December of this year, so we have it for next year. We do most of the work, this is for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the revow, but we do all our work and basically fiscal year twenty-four, we'll be doing the work. So that's why we need to have the money beforehand, because we need to be able to, in order to go out to bid, we've gotta show that we have the money. So that's why it's now, it's been, it's five years now instead of three years, and that was a typo I saw and I gotta talk to you tomorrow, it was a bit on that. I thought I fixed it, but I might not have saved it for whatever reason. So it's five years now, the revow, every year we do do interim adjustments as needed. But the revow is every five years and that's where we have the D O R comes in, they go, they review everything, so it's a little more detailed.
So this is just for the commercial and industrial and the personal property? Not for home eval, home valuations?
No, we do most of the home stuff inside, in-house.
And you don't do that all in one year, right? That's staggered, so some people get a revaluation.
As far as the inspections, the reciprocal inspections, we do over ten years.
Yeah.
Some years we get to do more than others, it depends on what's going on, the revow years, we don't do as many unless we hire an outside firm because we're falling behind for whatever reason, then we might hire somebody to do some, but there's only two of us in-house that do the inspections, so if I'm tied up with the revow and really don't get to do the inspections. We've been fortunate this year, we haven't had many abatements, the abatements were low, so I've been able to do some more inspections, so that has been good.
Just to be clear, if you don't have an inspection in a given year, your value is going to almost likely increase just based on you, there's basically a market factor that gets applied, right?
Right, right.
So I think that's something. You know, Donnie, when we were talking about other projects, I think it's successful, the actual tax rate impact so far of the Blanch Ames School is much smaller than what we had forecasted would be. But depending on the value of someone's property, you know, they may still see their taxes going up, but a lot of what's contributing to that right now is that values went up ten percent in one year. We anticipate that'll probably happen again in the coming year, but that's why the board took the step of splitting the rate.
Right.
So so this.
And those those valuations were based on fiscal twenty-one.
Alright.
So next, can they reach calendar of, calendar year, yeah, I would say.
Yeah, how was your twenty?
The year twenty-one, so that's correct.
We we anticipate probably a very similar impact for people looking at sales data from calendar twenty-two is still up ten percent plus year over year.
And even the twenty-three sales so far, even though the interest rate has gone up, the sales have not. The amount of sales have slowed because the inventory has slowed, or has decreased, but the sales.
The values have stayed up.
The values are still going up, yeah, I mean, when we do, we do a weekly report on our sales and we're coming in anywhere from seventy-three to ninety, still with some, but you gotta remember, the value basically is two years old from the current sale, so.
And so to be clear, so this article, if people are curious, it's not, this won't have any real, setting assignment is required by law. This has no real appreciable impact on the existing standards for how their house is assessed. This is really gonna give us a toolkit to have much more detailed assessment of commercial industrial property.
Right.
Which if anything may be helpful to the homeowners.
Right. Right.
This is what we want, yeah, and this is the first step, so we just split this rate, so this is, it's kind of a inaugural like a step moving forward into this, you know, split tax, split tax rate.
Well, I wanted to talk about that a little bit because when you say personal property, not everybody knows what that is and when you talk about the utility companies, so they pay a tax on the equipment and fixtures that they have.
Right, the utility companies pay personal property taxes, they don't, some of them have some land that they own, you know, the when you see the towers and the wires going, they own that land, the right of ways and that. So they do get assessed for that as far as real estate tax, but the personal property, personal property, it depends on how the business is set up. If it's a individual, if Dottie owns this room, everything in this room is taxable. Now, if Dottie's a corporation, it's a little different because you're paying corporation taxes to the state, so not everything is taxable for the town. So it depends on how the companies are set up, the the utilities are set up a little differently with the real, with the personal property tax, and personal property tax does not affect residential.
Right.
The only time it affects residential and it doesn't really affect anyone really in Easton, but if you have a home down the Cape or you have a scattered home somewhere else in the state, then you're probably paying personal property tax on your, whatever you have inside. And that has changed throughout the years, sometimes it's a percentage of what the valuation is and sometimes it's actually a listing of everything that's in there. But if it's a single, a single individual ownership, you know, they have a rug on the floor, a scattered rug, that's taxable. That's, you know, so it depends on the way the business is set up.
But from the vast majority of circumstances, for personal property, real estate tax doesn't actually apply to an individual person's property, it's on a business property.
Right, no. Right.
So it's an important distinction, it's a, it's just confusing jargon.
Yeah. It's like when people see the CPA on their tax bill, we always get the question, why are we paying for certified public accounting? We're like, no, that's the surcharge, so.
All the acronyms.
That's on the.
Alright, any other questions?
So I move to include and recommend article eight.
Second, Liam. Second land.
Bardra and Lamb, all in favor, unanimous, excellent, thanks.
Thank you, have a good night.
You're on, we'll see you.
All right, next up, the acceptance of the February twenty-seventh meeting minutes.
Second land.
Bardra and Lamb, all in favor, unanimous, and town administrator notes.
I do not have any particular notes, but I'm going to put Assistant Town Administrator Blanchard on the spot to talk about Citizens Academy, which starts next week and we are super excited about, so.
Yeah, we're, so we're really excited, I know a few weeks ago, I gave the presentation to the board, it does kick off on March twentieth. We have just over half of capacity, so if there are any last minute entries, we are accepting that. We updated our website and social media posts, if people can still do that. So please, you know, family, friends, neighbors who are interested, it's certainly not too late. The other thing I just wanna mention, the Police Department put out a press release, it's obviously important to mention it while we're on TV that the Police and Fire will be doing two joint training exercises on the Center School property, which we just talked about tonight.
Sure.
First, the training will take place tomorrow and then again on Tuesday, March twenty-first, both days from nine AM to one PM. The public will notice a large police confider presence, but please be aware, it is only training, there is no cause for concern or any danger. They may hear some noises during the training. And although people may be curious, please note that the, the exercise is closed to public and the media, so not to wander over and explore.
We have.
Social media will be above.
Oh, yeah.
We have, we have shared it on the website, we've shared it on social media, we're sure it will still pop up, but we've done our best to get word out.
Oh, yeah.
It's on our general page as well.
It is, yes, yep.
Excellent, thank you. Mark?
I have no comments.
No comments, Craig?
I have none.
And I guess I would just say, you know, thinking about leading up to town meeting, I would really recommend that people start trying to follow our budget. Go onto the website and look, look at the financial comments and memos and as we start to really dig in and whittle away this budget. Try to let us know if you have any questions or comments, it's the main budget this year and love to see more input from the public on that. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to go into an executive session under purpose three and six of Mass General Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A respectively, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation relating to Robert V. Or Incorporated and Break Builders and/or to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property for land situated at the southeast corner of the intersection of Washington Street and Main Street. Because the chair declared us that there's an open, an open meeting, they have executive session, not to return to open session.
Second land.
Bardra and Lamb?
Bardra, yes, Lamb, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. So, thank you everyone, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thanks, you can't.